Today, we're just going to be talking about the God-created woman, and that you were created in God's image. And this paper is not going to have all the Scriptures, but it's going to have the meat of what we're saying, so you can walk away with what we're saying. So, a lot of times, obviously, you hear about Adam and Eve, but I think sometimes we get lost in that you were created by God for a purpose. So, each woman with your... You have to think about the dynamic of that day. You know, whenever God is looking over the earth and He creates man. And you'll see the Scriptures, Genesis 2:18-24. I'm going to skim read it, okay? But I'll read. It says, "Then the Lord God said, 'It is not good that the man should be alone. I will make him a helper that is fit for him.'" So, out of the ground, you see God is forming the beasts of the field. He starts forming the animals, and the creatures come, and Adam names them and gives them a name. And they see the animals, and it says, "But for Adam there was not found a helper fit for him." So, the Lord caused a deep sleep to fall on the man while he was asleep. He took his ribs, clothed the place of his flesh. And the rib that the Lord God had taken from the man, he made into a woman and brought her to the man. Then the man said, "This at last is bone of my bone, flesh of my flesh; she shall be called woman because she was taken out of man. And therefore, man shall leave his mother and father and cleave and host to his wife." So, originally, you were created as a solution. You were a solution to an epic problem. Adam needed a helper. He needed someone to be a helpmate to him. And so, God created you as a solution. You're created with your... We are... Okay, we're going to take into account that you understand that we're not born perfect. We're... None of us are the perfect what God had in the garden. None of us are Eve, you know, in her perfect state. Our emotions, we're not perfect. But your emotions, your mindsets, the way that you are as a woman... You can see these keynote things in each woman. Each woman is emotional. It varies in degree. But each woman is naturally a nurturer. Each woman has these natural strengths that... They're different than a man's strength. Then, you often hear that said, that men could never do childbearing. You know, they're physically strong, but the strength of a woman is different. And so, God said... He saw that man needed that side of women. And even if you don't get married, or you know, like we always... We used to tell the young people, even if you never end up getting married, you need men, and they need you. The two, you need that. That's why you need your Father. And that's why you need your heavenly Father. Those two come together, and there's something in you as a woman. And so, we're not... We don't ever need to try to be men. You know, we do have this movement, obviously, with New Age and this women's liberation that's been going on since the 60s and further back. We won't get into that, okay? I can get really sidetracked on that. But we are created equal, but we are different, and that's okay. You know, we need to be women, and we don't need to try to be men. And I don't think it's accurate to say we can do everything men can do. And it's not accurate to say that men can do everything we could do. There are roles that were God-designed, gender-designed, and we're not going to get into that today. But we need Him. We need God. We need men. And the Bible says, you know, that we're all called to a specific purpose, that the call is irrevocable, means it can't be turned back. So, you don't need to try to be anybody except who God called you to be. And as we get further in this today, we'll see that. So, you were definitely created for a purpose. You are a helper, nurturer, lover. You offer strength. All those... The essence of who you are, there's a backbone. There's a spinal cord that connects to heaven. And when I say that, I mean, there's a basic DNA and blueprint that every woman lines up with, and it's heaven's idea. So, God needed women. He created us. And then, you need God. And that seems so basic, right? But it says in Mark 12:30, "You shall love the Lord your God with all of your heart, with all of your soul, with all of your mind, and with all of your strength." So, that's saying, every part of me, all my... The helper, the nurturer, the strengthener, the emotions, everything in you needs God. With all of your strength, with all of your heart, that's everything in you. That is not... That means every day... When we're talking about prayer in these classes, where obviously, we're going to integrate prayer, every day, I go for a specific time, at a specific time of the day, and I go to God and I say, "I need you," because you need Him. You know, what the world does is they go as far as they can in their own strength. And some people have incredible strength and incredible talents and incredible gifts. I think of Tom Cruise and Nicole Kidman. You know, they went for how... I mean, it was over 15 years that they endured, and their marriage made it. And then, all of a sudden, out of the blue, no one can figure out why, you know, their marriage didn't make it. That's just a popular example. But so, in the natural, you can go as really far. You know, they looked like they were a good, strong couple. They... But they weren't... They didn't have God at the center of their life. And so, they only could go so far. Imagine what they could have done with God. So, you need God. And so, as a Christian woman, what we're trying to do is find out how we can come to Him daily and say, "I need you. I need the strength that you have to offer." Did you know that heaven has strength? And there's a... It says in the Word that there's such a great cloud of witnesses. That's the people in heaven that are there, that've been there for thousands and hundreds of years. They're looking, and they're cheering us on. They're looking, and they're hoping that we'll make it. There's strength that heaven has to offer us, women. And the bad part is, we don't always take it. But whenever you come into covenant with Jesus, when you say, "Jesus, I accept what you did on the cross. You're my Lord. You're my Savior." You've now come into relationship with heaven. You know, it's no small deal. Think about... I always imagine the Creator sitting on the huge throne, and His Son said, "Gave you the invitation. You accepted it." And so, now, spiritually speaking, you're standing with Jesus in heaven. And now, you've got all this power available to you. So, one day, physically, we'll obviously be there. But you've got all this power available to you, and we can't get through 24 hours without breaking down sometimes. And it's only because you don't realize how dependent you are. It's not a weakness to be dependent on God. And everything in our culture is teaching us, we don't need anybody. We just roll your shoulders back, push through. You can do it. And the bottom line is, you can't do it. You know, you need God. And if you're married, you need your spouse. And if you're not married, you need friends. You need godly women that will come and give you a good heel to the rear every once in a while. You need friends, and you need people. And it's not a weakness that you need people. And so, just like, you know, whenever there's a covenant between man and woman, whenever we... Josh and I made a covenant in marriage. I said, "I'm going to stick with you. This covenant is forever." And I'm real... When you come together, they should... We tell people this. You should... We should have told people this a long time ago. When you come together, you're actually saying, "We're coming together. I'm offering you what I have, and you're offering me what you have. And we're coming together, and we're going to let our strength, the two shall become one. We're going to let those strengths mold each other and grow each other." And that's what God... God come... When you say yes to Jesus, God is now living inside of you. And so, it's no different if Josh and I are in a relationship, and I never talked to him. I never spent time with him. He hasn't changed. He hasn't gone anywhere. But the relationship's going to be very low level. We might have actually had more fun dating, you know? And it's the same way with God. Your relationship with God only grows and flourishes and gets as deep and as wide as you make it. It's the responsibility is not up to Him. And sometimes, I think we get in church and we forget that, you know, that He did His part. And some of you guys have been through Bible school. Some of you guys have been in church for up 10 years. But the truth is, He already did everything He's going to do. And He offered you the closest relationship. His Spirit came and lived inside of you. Says, "You are the temple." So, you have your part, and He has His part, obviously. But He's already done His part. He's offered you everything. He's given you the Word. He's given you people. And so, you have to realize, "I need God. He needed me, and I need Him." And then, the third point that you see on your paper there is that He needs you to be you. And I'm going to read the Scripture in a second. But what I mean by that, each woman is unique. And we all, like we talked about, there's the backbone, the helper, the nurturer, the lover, the strong one, the confidence, the boldness. But each woman has a unique DNA. It's really... Whenever you... I don't know how much you guys like science, but when you really look at the DNA strand and how complicated and complex, and it's mind-boggling. They can't... The scientists can't even figure it out. You know, they just overlook that when they talk about evolution. But it's so complex. And so, even though we all have this basic thread of nurturer, lover, all this, each woman has their own DNA. You have who you're supposed to be. And we used... The reason pastors and I just love children's ministry and youth ministry is because the younger you fall in love with Jesus, the less mess you have to clean out to find out who you are. So, the sooner the children or the teenagers come into that relationship, they can just save themselves so much time. So, wherever you are in life, how long you've known Jesus, how long you've walked with the Lord, depends on how well you know yourself. The true essence of who you are is not even known till you get in this relationship with Him. And so... But whoever you are, for example, I'm not pastor. I'm never going to be pastor. I don't even try to be. But when we... He's been saved and on fire for the Lord for about 16 years. And I'm telling you guys, His sister's here. She could attest to it. It's like night and day. Like, He got saved, and He went hardcore, and He has never turned back. He... When He was 14, He got saved, and He never went back. And He's been strong... I mean, it's annoying how smart He is sometimes. It's annoying how wisdom just flows. Like, you can... I can say, "I want to take the kids, and I want to go to the park at 10." And He's like, "Well, did you check the weather? Did you do this? Did you know..." All these little... He just... 15 things will spill out that I might not have thought of. And I used to be at war with that. I used to compare myself, think, "If I'm going to do ministry with Him, I have to be like this. I have to be able to do this. I have to be able to do..." And women are the worst about that. We do that with other women. We do that with our sp... Anybody that we respect. You don't have to be like anyone. There are... And through these five classes, you'll see this. There are things that you are supposed to do. There are areas you're supposed to grow in, absolutely. But I'm not ever going to articulate like pastor. I don't even think like Him. Our brains are wired very different. I'm never going to be like Him. But together, we can be completely different, but we can be strong together. And so, that, to me, we always say this when we get together with women. Whatever you have to offer, come together in your strength and strengthen each other. Strengthen your spouses. Strengthen your children. Because whoever you are, that's what we need. We don't need another pastor. We don't need another Jen. We don't need another Tina. Ms. Tina's the one who leads our worship. We don't need any... We need you the way you are. And where you are weak, you can grow. But in Psalms 27:3, this is David talking, "Though an army encamps against me, my heart shall not fear; though war rises against me, yet I shall be confident." True confidence comes from knowing that you are only who you are because of Him. That's where the true confidence comes in. It's not, "I am only confident in the Lord." That when we're talking about prayer, the only way that I can show up on Sunday morning and be ready for that Sunday service, ready to come and love people, and ready to answer questions, ready to worship, is because I pray. You know, the only reason pastor is able to do what he does is because he prays daily. There's only one day a week that we don't have as hour or more of prayer, because that's our date day. But there are... Every other day, six days a week, we pray. And He... And we usually pray hours. And He prays and studies. But when He gets in the pulpit, it's all because of that relationship. It's not... He's not special. I mean, He's special to me, but I'm saying, in God's eyes, in that way, we're all created equal. And we're... He looks, and He sees. And it says, "He's looking, and He's searching for people who are reaching out to Him." And so, you can be all that He has for you as long as you realize, "It's all because of Him." And there are days, and there are times, and there are seasons. You know, when I had my little ones... Most of you guys have seen them. McKinley's going to be six. Dakota is four. She's going to be five. They're 17 months apart. That's a really hard season for me, to have them nursed, both of them. And I wasn't able to be as connected to God as I would like to be. And anyone who's had children knows this. And so, God... But God knows that. So, He knows your season of life. He knows where you are, your time, everything. And so, whatever season of life you're in, He expects you to be all that you're supposed to be in that season. You never get to get, you know, get that get-out-of-jail-free card, you know? "Here's my card, God. I just... I take a pass on life. I don't want to do the work." You don't get to do that. And you can't. And what we see in the church a lot of times is people that do. They say, "I've had enough. I don't... I'm not going to work, do the work anymore." And you just see people, you look at them, you go, "Gosh, they're so gifted. They're so talented. They could be so much more." And you see who they are and their potential, but they can't see it. And so, I would not want you to ever get to that place. I want you to see your awesome... I call it your awesomeness. You need to see your awesomeness and all that you have in you and rise up and say, "I am that woman." In this, when you read this, Psalms 27, you read David's... When you... Psalms gives the best picture of his emotions and where he's up and down. You see a man that was dealing with his flesh, with being taken through the heels and chased by someone he was supposed to... You see the ups and downs. But then, you see this verse stands out, "Yet I will be confident." And so, the confidence comes from that relationship. Because at the end of the day, David knew, "God is not going to leave me here, running and fearful." And so, you just be who you're supposed to be and just be strong in that. And a side note, a great book that I read that helped, just, I thought it was really good, was Kiss the Girls and Made Them Cry by Lisa Bavir. All of Lisa Bavir's books, they all are on the Kindle. They're online. You know, you can purchase them at the book, Bible bookstore. But that book really helped you see womanhood in a different light. And just to further emphasize, your uniqueness, your personality, the only thing you have to do, the only thing you have to do is make sure that you're... Whoever you are is submitted to Christ. I had one woman said, "You know, I'm just very strong. I can't change how strong I am. I can't change my... I want to speak my mind. I want to..." And so, I was like, "How do you answer that, Lord?" Because you don't want to lose who you are in trying to submit to God. You know, if you're strong and courageous, and you speak what's on your mind, or maybe you're quiet and you're reserved. Where is that balance? And so, finding out who you are is intricate, and you just can only do that through daily prayer. But the keynote thing is to make sure... And I'll just... I don't think they're on your paper. Make sure you submit yourself to God's Word from 1 Corinthians 13, which is what we call the Love chapter. Talks all about the love of God. And Galatians 5, you can read the whole thing, but Galatians 5:22. So, if who you are is patient, kind, you don't envy, you don't boast, you're not arrogant, you're not rude, you're not insisting on your own way, and then, the fruits of the Spirit, you should know: faithfulness, gentleness, self-control, kindness, love, joy, peace, patience. So, if who you are, say you're strong and bold and like to speak your mind, because that's who... That's kind of more who I tend to be, as far as the speaking your mind. I had to really go through a season of submitting that. But I had to really focus on 1 Corinthians 13 and Galatians 5:22, 23. "Am what I'm doing, is it lovely? Is it peaceful? Is it... When I speak, is it bringing chaos or order? Am I hurting someone? The Bible says you can use words. They're like a sharp arrow, and they pierce right to the heart. I have that ability. I have that kind of..." Y'all don't ever get to see it, but I have that sassy, smart pants, and if... And I can be witty, and I can say stuff that can cut you right to the heart. Is that godly? So, whoever you are, you just... If you have a question, "Does this... Is this characteristic like God?", those two Scriptures, that'll help you. Because it's... And then, if you're quiet... I've been on that, which is weird that you'd be sassy and quiet, huh? I was quiet, but sassy. So, sassy was a defense mechanism. But you can be too quiet. I was too quiet, and I had to learn how to come out of myself. I had to learn... And the Bible talks about iron sharpening iron. Josh, pastor, would just walk off and leave me in a crowded room, and I wouldn't see him for like 30 minutes, and I would have to talk. So, you... I learned to come out of a lot of that. So, you... Whoever you are, realize what we're talking about. God needs you. You need Him. And you need to be who you're supposed to be. And how... Asking God, as we go through these classes and even for Friday night, preparing yourself, "What do you want to say to me, God? What areas do I need to grow, or what areas do I need to shrink in?" That's usually the issue. Probably, you need to shrink in a few areas. And the fourth point is, God gave you specific gifts and talents. Romans 12:6 says, "Having gifts that differ according to the grace given to us. Let us use them..." And we're not going to read the next. You can read that later. "...in proportion to our faith." So, yeah, sorry. Romans 11:29 says, "For the gifts and the calling of God are irrevocable." The NLT version of that says, "For God's gifts and His call can never be withdrawn." So, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about like Nicole Kidman and Tom Cruise. They're obviously gifted and talented to act and perform. So, those talents and gifts are never going to be taken away. Each person, each woman, has a gift and a talent. I don't want to pick on Lacey, make her uncomfortable. But Lacey has a talent. She's a hairdresser. But she has a talent to make people beautiful. I remember when she was in high school, it was a prom or something, and there was this girl who were unnamed. I did not think that she could be made beautiful. I did not think that her hair could be made beautiful. I think her skin, nothing. And we... And I was... This is a little harsh, I know. But Lacey took her, and to this day, her life has been changed by just Lacey taking her, doing her hair, befriending her, her makeup, you know, the whole... And she took her talent, and at the time, she was young. She was only like 15 or 16. She wasn't intentionally thinking, "I'm going to rescue..." It's just in her, "I have to help this person be beautiful." And that's how... That was a gift and a talent. I know another... And I love hairdressers, obviously. I like to have my hair done. Another hairdresser, Lafayette, she has a great gift to make women beautiful. Like, take their hair and just do these amazing... And I told her, I said, "You're like an artist for hair," you know? And so... But it is. You would think, overlook that, go, "Well, a hairdresser..." You know, there... Why do women feel a natural flow to certain things? You know, you want to stay at home. Maybe you're a stay-at-home mom. You feel that flow. You want to nurture your children. You know, whatever you're doing, that's a talent and a gift. And some talents and gifts, like a hairdresser, you know, that... You can see that. That's something that you can see. But maybe like, one of my things that I've kind of lost with kids is organization. I like everything in its place. I like it real... That's not something you're really going to see, but if you come to my house and open my drawers, you're going to see that she's... She may be OCD, you know? So, there's gifts and talents that people can see. I think Ms. Tina Welch, with her singing and her music abilities, her way to lead, you see... We see that every week. Every week, we come and we get to enjoy that gift. And so, there are gifts that you'll see, but then, there are hidden gifts. There are gifts that no one will ever see. And so, whatever your gift or talent is, you need to rest in that. You don't need to try to fight to be something else. There are sometimes, like I said, I was a little too shy. And there was this thing in my heart where God would just kind of be pushing me, you know? "Get out there. I don't want to talk. I'm going to be quiet," you know? So, there is that you have to... And more, we talk about prayer, you'll see this. But you have to figure out what's you trying to make stuff happen, and what's God saying, "No, you need to grow in this area, or you need to shrink in this area." And so, the closer you get to God, you'll know those things. But you don't need to try to be someone else. You need to be happy with the gifts and talents. I know I used to always... It's hilarious. We... Jamie and I joke. Oh, actually, it's funny, because my sister's husband is like, "We're like this." But we think alike. And what's so funny is, we both hum and sing. And neither of us can... Don't tell him. Neither of us can carry a tune. Neither of us should be singing. So, we'll both be singing and humming. And it's... And when I was a teenager, okay, we just tell... Whitney Houston was like the big wig, and she would sing that beautiful song. I'm not going to do it. But she would sing, and I would sing with her. And I would have the music so loud, I couldn't hear myself. I was like, so convinced I sounded like Whitney Houston. And years, you know, fast forward about seven years. I'm married to Josh, and I'm... This song comes, and it strikes my memory. I can't remember the name of her song, but it's her most popular song. So, this song comes on, and I sing it. I belt it. It's so sure.[1560.54] So this song comes on and I sing it, I belt it, it's so sure. And he goes, "Would you never do that again?" Like he was joking, "Would you never do that again?" I was like, "Well, don't I sound great?" He's like, "No, it's horrible. Let her do her job." Okay, I don't, I can't sing. So, you know, it's like, we always used to say, you know, it's like trying to put a square peg in a circle hole. It's not going to work. You can beat, you, beat that thing and it will just keep breaking and mushing down, but it's not ever going to fit in the hole. And so you can't, you can't make it happen. I mean, that would have been, that's, I mean, we've seen American Idol, haven't we? The most pitiful, pitiful thing, you know? You hear them and they're so convinced and their family lied to them for years. You know, I'd rather someone tell me the truth than lie to me. So you be who you're supposed to be and be confident in that. And godly confidence is humble, oddly enough. Sometimes a confident person can seem arrogant and, but there, it's, it's actually very humble. I would say that some of the most godly people, they seem a little arrogant, but they're actually the most humble people I know. So you, there's that, you've got to be confident in who you are. And you only get that from that daily coming to Jesus and being willing to let Him chisel off some stuff. And the last thing we'll cover is you're all called to pray. We can all pray. If you go, "I don't know what my gift is, I don't know what my talent is." Ephesians 16:18 says, "Pray at all times and on every occasion in the power of the Holy Spirit. Stay alert, be persistent in your prayers for all Christians everywhere." So there's a direct order, pray at all times. If you don't know what you, maybe you don't know, what am I, what is, everybody gets hung up on this. Rick Warren wrote a, a book, My Purpose, Purpose Driven Life. You know, what is, what is my purpose? What is my call? What is it? And I've, I've spent a lot of time stressing out over it. That's why I can, I was like, "God, if you would just tell me my purpose." And God is just, always goes, "Just pray, just do the day-to-day." You know, you want to, maybe, I know when I had the kids, they're little and I feel this call to ministry with my husband. The first three, four years was really hard. It's just all kids, you know? And you're, you're trying to do what you can to be there for your spouse. But we're starting the church at the same time and I wanted to be a part. And maybe there's something that you want to be a part of, but maybe it's just not the right season or the right time. You know, and no, but never discount yourself. Also, don't discount yourself saying, "I can't do this, I can't..." There is something specific. And that praying at all times, it says in Matthew 6:5, it says, "When you pray, don't be like the hypocrites. They love to stand and pray," and we're going to say in the church, "and at the street corners, that they may be seen by others. Truly I say to you that they have received their reward. But when you pray," this is Jesus, I almost left it red letter, okay? "But when you pray, go into your room, shut the door and pray to your Father who is in secret. And your Father who sees in secret will reward you openly." And so when you pray, pray in your bedroom, pray in your car, pray all the time. We don't, we've, we've talked about this before, if you've ever heard me talk. Don't be babbling in the grocery store, okay? Don't look like some psychotic person. If you're going to babble out loud and you're going to pray in tongues in appropriate times, tell them you go to church somewhere else. I'm joking. You know, be sensible, be somebody that people want to follow. But when you pray, take that time in your day-to-day life to submit yourself to Christ and to pray and to find out, what do you, get Him involved in your day. What do you want today? How, and when you do that, what happens, a lot of times when I go into prayer, I go sit, if you can talk, you can pray. I go sit and I'll put on some worship music. And sometimes you just have something so big in your heart, you can just pray and it just comes easy. A lot of times as a woman, we're very busy minded. So I turn up the music loud so my mind gets quiet. And I'll get in there and I've got, I usually have one favorite worship song I stay on for weeks, you know, till I burn it out and have to find another one. So I'll play it real loud and then I'll start worshiping. And when you love, see, it opens you up to God. You start loving on Him. It's not, it's not a dutiful thing. There are things that, such as prayer, that it shouldn't be that way all the time. Say 5% of the time of all over your whole life, if 5% was dutiful, but the other 95% was willful. That's where you should be, you know? It should, you should be willful to come to God, to sit down and to say, "What do you have for today?" Get His peace every day. What do you, what if you need His peace for that day? What if you need His presence? He knows what's coming in your day. He knows the stress, He knows everything. That's why I pray early. Some, it depends on your season of life, you may have to pray late. But I usually pray early in the morning before the sun comes up. I get Him involved in my day and, and He offers that strength.